You're a lawyer.
Before we officially move forward and start this meeting, I would like to begin tonight by calling for a moment of silence for the community of STEM School, the STEM School at Highlands Ranch in Douglas County. As we've just learned, we do know that there's an unconfirmed report that one of the students has passed. And with that being said, I know it's at times like this where we ask everyone to send out their thoughts and prayers, but I'd also like to just signal that as a society, it's probably time that we stop just calling this another school shooting and stop referring to it as just another day, another Tuesday, that we as leaders, as community members, start to look for real solutions to the problems that we are faced with. And I know a lot of us have little ones in the school. I see Hodgkin here this evening, as well as Colorado STEM. I think it's time we start looking at our resources that are the most valuable, and that is our children, and treat them like treasures. So with that, if we can have a moment of silence. Thank you. Veronica, can you please call roll?
Mr. Chancho?
Yes.
Mr. Davidek?
Here.
Mr. Math?
Here.
Mr. McCoy?
Present.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
All right, we're moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by myself tonight.
Job well done.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and just for all.
Thank you. Moving on to our second agenda item, agenda approval.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the proposed agenda for the regular meeting dated May 7th, 2019.
Second. We have a motion and second. Any comments? With no comments, Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho?
Yes.
Mr. Davidek?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item three, we have two sets of outstanding minutes.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the regular board meeting minutes dated April 23rd, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any comments? With none, Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho?
Aye.
Mr. Davidek?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
We still have one more set of outstanding minutes.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the executive session and study session meeting minutes for the executive session dated April 23rd, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any comments? With none, Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho?
Yes.
Mr. Davidek?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item number four, recognitions, with Mr. Steve Saunders.
Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Swanson, actually, we have two sets of recognitions tonight for people who have, as we say, go above and beyond on behalf of all of the children in our school district. And first, we're going to do the Fred Awards, and then the ESP Employee of the Year Awards. So we begin with the Fred Awards, and Mike Lynch. Mike?
Steve. President, members of the board, Dr. Swanson, I can attest that good customer service is alive and well. We have two winners for this last quarter of our Fred Award. If I could invite down both the winners, when I call your name, and their nominators, to read what makes them such exceptional customer service resources. First, Jillian Spellman in Human Resources nominated by Carrie Rule. Come on down.
Hello, I'm Carrie Rule. I work in, and I've had the pleasure of working with her quite often. We've worked together a lot with the compliance of, of files. And lately, we've had a lot of visits from stepping up as soon as I call and ask, hey, I've got a visit coming, can you come in there and help me out? Jillian is always willing to, does not hesitate whatsoever anytime I call, or anytime a pinch situation arises. Showing up at the ESC doors, offering, or asking for an answer. Smile.
Wear it every day. Five? Or longer. There's your trophy from Carler STEM Academy, and here's your book. And next, the esteemed teacher, Michael Leinert, initials M.J.L., come on down. And he was nominated by a senior at Westminster High School, Felicia Garcia. Come on down.
Does anyone else have M.J.L. as initials around here? Michael?
J.
Lynch?
All right. I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Leinert over the last four years. Mr. Leinert is an exemplary educator who has gone exceedingly above what is expected from a teacher. Mr. Leinert has not only helped me in finding what would be best for me in my career, but has also helped me through every step in starting and completing collegiate preparations. He is an essential link that brings our WHS orchestra program together, and is always thinking about the students and the community in everything he does. If I could give Mr. Leinert a Grammy Award, I would give him a Grammy Award. I would, because he's a truly amazing teacher. Thank you, Mr. Leinert.
Red pen, wear it every day, rest of your life. That red by tomorrow.
All right, we are going to move on to the ESP of the Year Awards with Mr. Steve Saunders.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Swanson, at first, I always look at that and think it's ESP Award, and think Kirk's all over that, but it's ESP, and Kirk's all over that, too. So Kirk will day. Don't I get some music or something to walk up to?
Only if you were your show.
All right. Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Swanson, I'm honored to present to the Board of Education four outstanding educational support professionals as this year's outstanding ESP Employees of the Year.
Excuse me.
Oh, I thought he said, okay. First, we have Ms. Ingrid Chacon, a Special Services Assistant at Hodgkins Elementary, and Mr. Matt Abashan will be speaking on her behalf.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Swanson. I promise, Amber has a lot of videos of Ingrid, but I promised her I would not put those up on the screen tonight, so. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about one of the unsung heroes in our district. I've had the pleasure of knowing Ingrid for over ten years. She worked in our early childhood department as a paraprofessional, and is currently working in the special ed department at Hodgkins, as well as providing parent education in the evenings at the early childhood center as part of our Incredible Years program. I've had the pleasure of watching her both in the classroom and in the parenting program. Ingrid does an amazing job with our parenting program. It's a hard sell a lot of times for parents to say, hey, I need you to come in and take a 16-week parenting program. A lot of our parents don't want to do that. It's a tough thing to say, hey, I need some help with that. A lot of the parents who come in are young parents, usually with their first child, and Ingrid does an amazing job of helping nervous parents realize that there are a lot of people out there who are just like them, and a lot of the problems they're facing, they've been seen before, and really builds a nice cohort of these parents together. And it's amazing to watch them transform as a group of 16 to 32 people over the course of their tenure. In addition, she just does an amazing job in special education. I've yet to see the child that we can put in Ingrid's class that she doesn't love and treat like her own. Just last week, I was over at Hodgkins in the morning, and I was watching the pass program in the cafeteria, and you could see outside, there was a group of special needs students, and one little girl was having a rough day. She was in tears, she was off by herself, and you could just tell, it was not her best day. And a lot of folks sort of just yelled to her from afar and said, hey, come here. But Ingrid went over, and she took a knee, and, as I knock down all of these, she took a knee, and she gave real one-on-one attention, and put her hand on the little girl's shoulder. You could tell it was a very sweet and tender conversation, and by the end, the little girl gave her a hug, had a huge smile on her face, and she went back to her group. And that's just something that Ingrid does. She takes that little extra time to go above and beyond to make sure her kids are cared for. So I want to, again, recognize an unsung hero in the district. I know her colleagues from Hodgkins feel the same way, and thank you for giving her this recognition.
Next, we have Tuk Arak Garang, custodian at Sunset Ridge Elementary School, and Mr. Matt Abashan will speak on his behalf.
So Arak was nominated by Mr. Vadine, who can't be here tonight due to his son's college graduation, but he did give me some words he'd like me to read on his behalf. So it was a pleasure to nominate Mr. Arak Garang as one of the outstanding educational support personnel for the 2018-19 school year. Arak is the evening custodian at Sunset Ridge Elementary. He consistently demonstrates high-quality work, and he takes pride in doing an excellent job for the students and staff of Sunset Ridge. The students and staff of our school have heard Arak's inspirational story of survival and compassion for others, and he's a true rock star at our school. I personally do not know anyone who more profoundly exemplifies the spirit and intent of the district's mission statement. We are lucky to have a person working in our district whose life story so clearly illustrates the importance and power to contribute to their community and achieve personal success. In 2001, Arak, along with many other lost boys of Sudan, arrived in the United States with the help of the United Nations. He put himself through college and graduated from the University of Colorado at Denver with a degree in economics. Throughout the years, Arak continually felt the calling to do what he could to rebuild his homeland. He knew the only way to positively reshape South Sudan would be through the education of the South Sudanese children who had survived the genocide. In 2008, he founded a nonprofit called Seeds of South Sudan. The mission of Seeds of South Sudan is to sponsor refugee orphans from the Kakuma Refugee Camp so they can receive an education in Kenyan boarding schools. Through Arak's leadership, nearly 100 African young people are reaching their full potential by attending schools and universities in Kenya and North America. Arak has many qualities that make him an outstanding employee who goes above and beyond what's required. He consistently completes assigned duties without prompts or reminders, and he looks forward for opportunities to assist in any way he can with the mission of Sunset Ridge. Time is now, make it count, every day matters. Mr. Arak Garang is a hard worker and a dependable employee, and I feel it's an honor for Westminster Public Schools to be able to recognize him as one of the outstanding ESP for the 2018-19 school year. Thank you.
Next, we have Nicole Gall, a General Education Assistant at Hidden Lake High School, and her supervisor, James Stewart.
Mr. President, Directors of the Board, Dr. Swanson, when I think of Nicole and the light that she's brought to our building starting this past fall, the students trust her. Trust her to help them with the technology and with the classes they're doing. Teachers trust her because she's actually teaching them how to integrate technology and do new and different learnings with the students, because she herself is becoming a teacher. We are growing our own at Hidden Lake, and I trust her. She's helped me with the off-site learners that we have in our online program, and she reaches out with them with joy and enthusiasm that keeps them connected, and she brings that joy to the office on a daily basis. Principal can't ask for a better employee than Nicole Gall. She makes the school shine, and that's why she is an extraordinary professional with us tonight.
Next, we have Ms. Vicky Kraus, Secretary, Principal at Hodgkins Elementary, and her supervisor, Amber Swikowski.
I was worried that my speech was too long, but after hearing Rogers, I'm just fine, so.
Poor Roger.
That's what we do with Roger. So, good evening, Board President, members of the board, and Dr. Swanson. I'm honored to speak tonight about Mrs. Vicky Kraus. Vicky is the heart and soul of Hodgkins. Although the list of her special skills is long, it is nothing in comparison to the list of her special qualities. Vicky is friendly, helpful, compassionate, and a true champion for our students and families. In spite of her workload, she is always willing to drop everything and help anyone find a solution to a difficult challenge, whether it be professional or personal. Vicky is phenomenal at her job. She's that type of person that excels at all that she attempts. She's incredibly organized, and she has an answer for all problems and questions. She can answer a phone call, count fundraiser money, input a new student into IC, and send an email, all at the same time. Really, she is that good. Over the last five years, she has been a driving force in the rollout and implementation of the leader in me at Hodgkins. For the past two years, Vicky has led training for staff in which she teaches the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. Vicky believes in educating the whole child. She has played a vital part in empowering our students to be leaders. Vicky understands that for some of our students, they need their social-emotional needs addressed first before they're able to learn the content. Vicky contributes to this need by being an adult mentor to students whom have been identified as needing an adult connection at the school. During her check-ins, she establishes a trusting relationship with her mentees and becomes one of their loudest cheerleaders. Vicky also recognizes the vital part that the family plays in their child's achievement. To provide families with tools to support their children, Vicky co-leads our Seven Habits of Highly Effective Family training in her spare time. As I said earlier, Vicky is the heart and soul of the building. She takes care of everyone and everything. Whether it is one of the many unwritten responsibilities of a building secretary, such as hiding 90 Easter peeps throughout the building with her principal for a staff team activity, or staying late to ensure that all students are safely reunited with their families after a controlled release, she is all in. For our students, she is a mother, a nurse, and a confidant. For the staff, she is a confidant, a mentor, and most importantly, a friend. Stephen Covey talks about your legacy, and how it's important to make the world around you better than it was before you got there. Vicky has left her legacy at Hodgkins and in Westminster Public Schools. We are all better and stronger for our students because of her. She will be retiring this year with 20-plus years of dedication to the district, students, and families. She has finally decided to put herself and her family first, and for this, we are extremely proud and happy for her. Congratulations, Vicky. You are incredibly deserving of this honor.
The four individuals that have been recognized tonight for their special qualities that support improvement of student achievement, each of these individuals is a distinguished representative of our educational support staff.
Okay, now, three, four.
Okay, now, three, two, one. You're in the back. Stand up. Stand up. Perfect. Thank you.
Woo!
For animals.
I'm just gonna wait until the...
What's next on the agenda?
All right. Pam, you really know how to clear out a room here.
Hopefully, it's Kirk. I guess we already cleared the room with Kirk, though. He was still giving his report, and we got up and walked off. I mean, that was not very nice, was it?
I assumed we were done.
I get no respect.
That's what happens when you assume. All right, we're gonna move on to Item 5, the Superintendent Report, with Dr. Pamela Swanson.
Well, good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Welcome to the month of May. This is the time when it seems like we see more of each other than we do our families, I think. We have a very full calendar. There's a lot going on here in the district and at the state level as well. And as you know, tomorrow, the Colorado State Board of Education will be asked to approve the innovation plan this board already approved unanimously for the Metropolitan Arts Academy. We have put together a detailed proposal to answer any potential questions that may arise. We'll be livestreaming it, and we'll also be posting on our website so the community can read it as well. I want to thank Dr. Duffy, who's helped shepherd this through, and Claudette will be with him as well as our legal counsel tomorrow down at the State Board. So, looking forward to having that sign sealed and in the books. Our team will be at the hearing, but we'll let you know what they have to say once that event has concluded. If you want to livestream it, they do livestream the State Board meetings as well for anyone interested. This week, the State Board will also be looking at potential changes to the very flawed state accountability system and the impact of the growth-to-standard component of the evaluation system for schools. Changes are long overdue, and we're taking a very active role in trying to shape and improve system. However, we have great concerns about this moving forward, and I know many of our neighboring districts do as well. You may remember, last fall, we convened a group of superintendents and district leadership to really help put a stopgap into things that were about to be changed, and they were moving at a rapid rate, and we were worried it was gonna do more harm than good. And so, I think, Oliver, you'll be down there along with probably Jeff Coe and some other districts on Thursday as well. So, very full agenda. Tune in, and we'll try to keep you up to speed. Bless you. Still more state-level education news. Governor Polis currently is going to be here on Thursday to sign two pieces of legislation passed in the just-completed session. Senate Bill 216 has to do with the innovative Pilot Learning Program focusing on student internships in high schools, and the other Senate Bill 137 extends the Colorado Student Leaders Institute to the year 2024. The institute creates a summer residential academic program for sophomore and junior students to attend college-level classes, lectures, and seminars, as well as enrichment activities, including concerts and theatrical productions. The reason I said he's currently scheduled is we just learned that the new piece of legislation providing for free full-day kindergarten for students, he had been scheduled to sign that tomorrow at Stedman Elementary in Denver, but we just received word late this afternoon that due to the very sad event in Highlands Ranch, he's going to cancel that and look for a different date in the near future. So, along with full-day kindergarten, we are still figuring out the budget intricacies before we'll know exactly how that's going to impact us. I think Matt is attending a meeting, is it Thursday, Matt, with the governor's advisor on this particular legislation? So, we should have, hopefully, some more information after that time. CDE did send out a note earlier today, and we have some concerns about initial looks at how they might want to implement that, but we'll keep you up to speed. So, hopefully, by Friday this week, I'll be able to give you several updates. An exciting day here today at Westminster High School as the Colorado Supreme Court came here to hear oral arguments on two cases before a student audience. WHS was selected to serve as host site for the courts in the community program. It's a real-life learning experience that allows students to understand how legal disputes are resolved in a democratic society. And I actually had the pleasure of meeting all of them individually when they took a break for lunch. And the justices and students heard oral arguments in two cases, and at the conclusion, our students did have a chance to ask questions of the attorneys and the justices. And afterwards, a select group of students also ate lunch with the justices, which was pretty cool. I will tell you that they were very complimentary of our students. They said they don't remember doing their business in the past publicly and getting applause at the end, but our students clapped for them. They really thought that was pretty cool, and I told them, "Yep, our kids are pretty sweet around here." And they just appreciated also the all-in aspects of our teachers when they came out to do the training ahead of their visit. So, I think it was a banner day for Westminster High School. It was also a busy weekend in the district as well, thanks to Highland Hills Foundation for a very successful Puts for a Purpose event at Adventure Golf. The foundation moved the event from fall to spring, and this year, families from Sunset Ridge, Mets, and Mesa were invited to spend the morning playing putt-putt and more. And I know I serve on the Highland Hills Foundation Board, and so I want to thank all my colleagues on the foundation board and people who donated bikes for this year's giveaway. And there's nothing like seeing the students jump up and down when their name is called, and they come forward to choose a bike and a helmet. It's very heartwarming. If you haven't had a chance yet, I encourage you to stop by Hidden Lake High School and Colorado STEM Academy to see all the great work done at both schools during Comcast Cares Day, and I have a short little video, so take a look.
Comcast Cares Day is Comcast's single-largest initiative for volunteerism, and we donate money, we donate manpower, and in-kind services.
We have an amazing crew of volunteers, 71 volunteers from Comcast, in addition to several from our school. We really wanted to have the exterior of our building reflect the amazing things that's going on inside our building, and we needed to add some color, and we really wanted to add the science component with the garden boxes on the outside by the track.
The district has two diamonds in the rough on this campus. They've got STEM Academy, which is a distinction school. They've got Hidden Lake, which is known literally statewide as one of their top alternative schools. It's making our community aware that connecting them to these two schools and the school district so that they start giving back even more than just the one day a year.
It's an amazing feeling to see everybody connect to help make a difference for our kids in a way that we can all reach out. We all are able to help clean up a campus, and we're all able to help, you know, get a little dirty and paint a black top, and to see the community connect to help make a difference, it's just an amazing feeling.
Jeff's in the background, but nice drone work, Jeff. I know you can hear me. And hot off the presses, as we say, here is the print-ready version of our School Enrollment Guide. This will be shared with realtors, developers, and the public. Pretty much, we'll put it everywhere where we believe community and family congregate in our school district and surrounding areas. Every school is profiled, and the brochure helps tell our story. So, these are complimentary copies. I think they're due to go out later this week. Steve, is that right? Yeah, they're at the printers. These are just some that we made in advance as complimentary, so enjoy those. And a reminder that next Monday is our annual retirement celebration at the Westminster Recreation Center. At last count, we are honoring 24 retirees. I hope to see you there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I think we're all just digging through this marketing piece here.
I didn't give it to you upfront.
Well, I appreciate that. All right, we're moving on to the next item, which is Item 6, Board of Education Discussion. Board, do we have any comments, lingering items that we'd like to throw out there?
Sure, I'll start off tonight. Last night, Mr. McCoy and I attended a meeting that was held at Hidden Lake High School, and the purpose of that meeting, we had some community members that live in and around the neighborhood right next to Hidden Lake that had some concerns. So, we had board members. James Stewart was there. We also, Dr. Duffy was there, and we had representatives from the city, parking, and we had representatives from the police force there, and actually, even the city, was it the City Traffic Manager?
Yep.
Yeah. So, anyway, we had a great meeting. We wanted to hear what some of the concerns of the community members were and assure them that we want to be good neighbors with them. So, I think a lot was accomplished there, and, you know, we wanted to send the message and want to continue to send the message that we're all on the same side, and we want to achieve the same thing. So, thanks to everyone who attended, and we'll report on further progress on that at a later date.
Thank you, and just to echo, I would agree that it seems like a resolution was had at that meeting. And, Mr. Stewart, I'd like to acknowledge a lot of your work that you've done through over the years in ensuring that we are good neighbors over there. So, thank you for your work. The one thing I did want to mention in walking through the hallways at Hidden Lake High School, since we're talking about Hidden Lake for a moment, if, Board, if you saw in the video some of the quotes that were being posted on the wall, those are quotes from the teachers and staff within Hidden Lake High School. So, James told me that it was definitely a surprise to the teachers when they showed up on Monday, and seeing that their quotes were on the wall, not sure why they were being collected, but that was the reason. So, I thought that was one of those mission moments for everyone involved, so pretty great. The only other thing I would add, just to signal to the board and those interested in CASB, the Colorado Association of School Boards, tomorrow, we are going through our hiring process of the new executive director. If you recall, Kindelay had been there for, I think, well over 20 years, or maybe 20 years on the marker, has been a good leader for public education, and we are looking at seeing who will take the realm and where we're gonna go next as an organization. So, that'll be an interesting process tomorrow, and I'm sure with, like, most school board members, and these are board members throughout the state of Colorado, they'll have opinions, and it'll be interesting. So, we'll have a good time. That's all I have to report. Anything else?
I have a few things. After our long board meeting two weeks ago, I had a long meeting with CHASA, and we had some major changes come through CHASA. VERY, that's our Colorado High School Activities Association. I'm very excited, actually, by the work that's going on there. We had all of our league realignments. Westminster will be staying in the East Metro Athletic Conference. Some schools have moved around, but good work was done. We made some changes to programming. We're under, sports and activities in CHASA run on a two-year cycle, and we're, what they say, mid-cycle right now, but we're piloting girls' wrestling and boys' volleyball, and excited about both of those opportunities for Colorado's youth. As people know, with Title Nine, am I correct, Tiffany? Title Nine, I get my titles confused a lot. But with Title Nine, if you add a sport or activity for males, you do the same for females and vice versa. It doesn't have to be the same, you just have to add an opportunity. We also added Unified Bowling, and people are like, "What is Unified Bowling?" Unified sports and activities are those that cater to our students who have special needs, and you have teams that are unified and built of students who have special needs and others who do not, and they're generally mixed, co-ed, and actually, really excited about that one coming online. It's another great opportunity. We have some pretty good leadership down there, a couple of retirements, and our own Gabe Trujillo got a call a day after the meeting that really is a blessing. He was asked by Commissioner Rhonda Blandford-Green to fill a vacancy for, there's 10 districts, I believe, in Colorado, and he will be one of the district commissioners, which represents Westminster and a tenth of the state of Colorado. So, hats off to him. That's really a great opportunity. And then, I don't know, I saw Max run through, and Ken was there as well, but she slipped out of the room early. Maureen Schroth did her usual fantastic marathon week of the district arts show, and unfortunately, I was, had to bow out as a judge because I was in bed with food poisoning. Great way to spend Easter.
It wasn't the food you make, was it?
No, no, no. No. And then, a week later, we had the Annual Taste of Hodgkins fundraiser, which was well-attended. I got to have my annual bromance with Ms. Swikowsky's husband, with whom I've been a food judge for many years and have thoroughly enjoyed all the time. But it was really a pretty special event, as usual, also organized by Ms. Schroth. Thank you to her for what she does with all that. The Teacher Cupcake Challenge about killed us this year because there were more entries than ever, and, thank goodness, I think she sometimes waits until after Lent, when she knows people are no longer on diets or giving things up, and says, "Okay, start eating." And some really fun entries. And then, other than that, just, I'm just kind of numb this evening because of what happened in Highlands Ranch. We've sat here so many times before, but there's parents in a family who sent their 18-year-old child to school this morning, and instead of having a graduation in a couple weeks, they're gonna be planning a funeral. And I think we've all just kind of become so numb as a society. I wanted to read a text one of my friends sent in a group chat we have about hockey. "Another school shooting. This one in Highlands Ranch. Y'all know the drill. Let's offer our thoughts and prayers as a solution." And I guess I would challenge all of us that while being a devout Catholic and having very strong faith in God, it's not enough anymore. We, as a society, have to lay down all of our sacred cows and put everything on the table. This has got to stop. Pray to God it never happens here, and I just pray to God that we stop doing this as a society. So, that's all I have to say.
Do you know, I did have a question about the pilot leagues for female wrestling and male volleyball. How does that branch out? Do schools sign up to participate, or are they already designated?
No, you get to offer it as a CHASA-recognized sport. Where you get a little complicated is you have to be able to put together a team, and you don't have to offer it, but you have the ability to offer it. I believe volleyball will be very successful here because we have a very, there's been about a 20-year volleyball program in the North Metro area, and many of our students participate in the, is it the Gold League? Or there's Gold League and Red League, et cetera. They're not presently in Westminster High School, and they participate because they're all around, but we have a very strong male volleyball component, and I believe Gabe is looking at bringing it on to tie into these Gold Leagues, et cetera, and really build...